Come to order is the Board of County Commissioners.
Good morning, will come to order is the Board of County Commissioners, September 23rd, 2003. You'll please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Father, we rely on you for guidance in our lives and as we draw closer to you, help us look at ourselves honestly and see where we need to change. In your name we pray, amen.
And now we have a treat this morning. We have music provided by the Lawnwood Elementary School Chorus, the fourth grade class of Ms. Linda Young.
Good morning from Mrs. Linda Young, fourth grade, St. Louis. We are happy to come to share with our elected officials in fourth grade, we study Florida history. We would like to share a few songs and a poem. Our first song is the Orange Blossom Song. I like to wake up in the morning where the orange blossoms grow, where the sun comes deep and it's where I'm sleeping and the sun birds say hello. I like the fresh air and the sunshine, it's so good for us, you know. So I make my home in Florida where the orange blossoms grow. I like to wake up in the morning where the orange blossoms grow, where the sun comes deep and it's where I'm sleeping and the sun birds say hello. I like the fresh air and the sunshine, it's so good for us, you know. So I make my home in Florida where the orange blossoms grow. We are also, we are also learning how important it is for us as responsible citizens to protect our precious Florida environment. Please listen as we recite a poem that helps us remember to conserve our resources. On a tree-covered road, not so very far away, and that is where I love to go just at any time of day, to stroll beneath the limbs of trees with the canopy of the greenest leaves, to watch the golden shafts of light separate the day from night, and hear the melody as it drifts among the trees. And in its solitude and quiet, I pray with all my might that man will spare this lovely sight. We love living in St. Lucie County. We have beautiful beaches, baseball, and the best people in the world. We also have many farms and ranches. Agriculture plays an important role in our community. Now Journey Town would like to present a song to honor all our single county cowboys. I wanna be cowboy sweetheart, I wanna learn to rope and ride. I wanna ride through the plains and the desert, out west to the grace of life. I wanna hear the coyote sing as the sun sets in the west. I wanna be cowboy sweetheart, that's the life I love the best. Happy hands, everybody! One more time! To end our program today, we'd like to just sing along as we share eight songs, Swanee River. Way down upon the Swanee River, far, far away. That's where my heart is turning ever, that's where the old folks stay. All the world is sad and dreary everywhere I roam. Oh, love, now my heart grows weary, far from the old folks at home. Oh, looking down the whole creation and me I roam. Still longing for the old plantation and for the old folks at home. All the world is sad and dreary everywhere I roam. Oh, love, now my heart grows weary, far from the old folks at home. Thank you for allowing us to come. Have a productive meeting and a wonderful night.
Thank you all. Thank you all so very much for coming. We've really enjoyed it. Now that's gonna be a hard act to follow, I must say. The rest, the next part is not gonna be that exciting, folks. We will move on to the approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes. I think we can do them all in one motion. We have the minutes of the meeting held September 16th, the minutes of the tentative budget hearing held September 11th, 2003, and also the the final budget meeting. I'm looking for the date on that because my head isn't working. That was September 18th, 2003. Do we have any changes or corrections to the minutes or will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The motion passes. Moving on to proclamations and presentations, we have resolution number 03-252. Madam Secretary, could you please read the resolution for us?
Resolution number 03-252, a resolution commending Mrs. Inez Ward for more than thirty-seven years of outstanding service as an employee of the St. Lucie County Administrator's Office and St. Lucie County Airport. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida has made the following determinations. Mrs. Inez Ward was born at home in South Fork, Pennsylvania on September 27th, 1941, and raised on a horse farm. In 1959, she moved with her parents to Lake Worth and in 1961 moved to Fort Pierce. In 1962, Inez was married to Carl Ward Sr., raised one daughter Audra and two sons Douglas and Carl. Inez and her husband Carl are the proud grandparents of seven grandchildren. Inez worked on the Advisory Board of St. Lucie County Safe Space and also was a board member for the St. Lucie County Fair Association for ten years. Mrs. Ward has worked for the St. Lucie County since November 8th, 1965. Throughout her more than thirty-five years of service, she has worked as a secretary for the county engineer, the county administrator, and the airport director. Additionally, Inez has worked as assistant to the county administrator and assistant port and airport director. While employed in her various positions, Mrs. Ward played an integral part in the organization of the county administrator's office along with the expansion of the airport. This board believes that dedications such as that demonstrated by Mrs. Inez Ward should be recognized. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida that this board does hereby commend Mrs. Inez Ward for her more than thirty-seven years of outstanding service with St. Lucie County and does hereby express its sincere appreciation and gratitude for a job well done.
Thank you. We have a motion on the resolution, please.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The resolution has been approved and at this point in time, I'd like to ask Mr. Phillips to come forward with whomever he may care to bring with him. I hope Mrs. Ward would care to come forward.
If your family doesn't want to come up, but at least Mrs. Ward will come up. Yeah, Madam Chairman, ah, here they come. Thank you. Thank you.
Now that's more like it.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, Paul Phillips, Airport Director. And this is a very mixed emotion day for me because obviously I've got great happiness for Ms. Ward and her family because they're gonna get her full-time, but obviously and for me, it's great sadness because I'm gonna lose the secretary and the helper that I've had for the five years I've been here. So, but since this is her day, I will certainly back up and let her introduce her supporting cast.
It's been a privilege for me to work for the county, and I'm not usually this blubbery. This is my daughter Audra, my son Doug, my son Buddy, my husband Carl, my son-in-law Eric, my daughter-in-law Dana, and my grandson Jared. And my airport family who didn't come up. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much. I think after thirty-seven years, you are allowed just a few tears. And we are so sorry to see you go, but so very proud and so very happy that you chose to dedicate your time to us for all those years. And I have a resolution here. Piece of paper isn't very much for thirty-seven years, but I'd really like you to take it. This is truly amazing. I think in days when people, you know, change jobs so many times, I don't think we will see many occasions where someone has been in someplace for so long and given so much. So I'd like to give another round of applause for Mrs. Ward.
Thank you.
And again, thank you very much.
Thank you. I've seen a lot of changes and I've made a lot of good friends here. And I really do, I really love that.
Well, thank you so much. Next item on our agenda is a presentation. The board wishes to congratulate the participants of the 2003 Big Brothers and Big Sisters Bowl for Kids' Sake Event. Mr. Mike Bowers, I understand, will handle this part of the agenda. I must say, there may not be a lot of business as usual at this part of the meeting today, but this is, there's some wonderful events going on.
Good morning. Mike Bowers, Assistant Public Works Director and past president of Big Brothers and Big Sisters of St. Lucie and Indian River County now. We are now both counties. This is a traveling trophy and we present it to the winners of the elected challenge each year at our Bowl for Kids. And the Board of County Commissioners won this trophy this year. Unfortunately, not by your bowling. You did it by your fundraising and your employees. The employees for the Board of County Commissioners raised over $6,000 themselves, so they really supported Big Brothers and Big Sisters this year. Two individuals who were large fundraisers with the clerk of the court was Nancy Allison, who raised over $3,000 on her own, $3,300 individual. And the individual, largest individual fundraiser was Bill Zroda with the Road and Bridge Division. He's unable to be here this morning, but he also was the number one fundraiser. So, if you would, for Bill Zroda. And the clerk of the court was no slouch in it. While we raised over for the board, over $6,000, they also came in with over $4,000. So we had quite a bit of support through Big, for Big Brothers and Big Sisters, through the county, through county employees, through the clerk of the court. And I want to thank you on behalf of the board. Thank you very much. Paul has a strep throat and Judy's out of town, so.
Oh, wow. Well, you were just fine, Mr. Bowers. We're glad to have you. Thank you. And I must say, I'm more proud of my employees than I am of my bowling anyway, so that's a good thing. We had a good time, is all I can say. And I will mention that I had spoken to Judy James before the event and she told me that for the two days, the lanes were totally sold out. And I think that's amazing. It has grown to be such a good fundraiser for them. Moving on to item two C, the reading of the announcements by the county administrator. Mr. Wasney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ray Wasney, Assistant County Administrator. The Board of County Commissioners will hold a public workshop on September 30th, 2003 at 1:00 PM in Conference Room Three to discuss western densities. The October 7th, 2003 Board of County Commissioners meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. There will be a groundbreaking ceremony for the Walton Road Annex Building on October 9th, 2003 at 10:30 AM on Walton Road in Port St. Lucie. There will be a public hearing on October 28th, 2003 at 1:00 PM in the commission chambers regarding Treasure Coast Tractor Services Incorporated and Treasure Coast Land Clearing. Meeting changes for November 2003. The Board of County Commissioners meeting for November 11th, 2003 will be canceled due to the holiday. The November 18th, 2003 Board of County Commissioners meeting will be changed to 9:00 AM for the annual reorganization. The November 25th, 2003 Board of County Commissioners meeting will be changed to 7:00 PM. That concludes the announcements, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is general public comment. If there are any members of the public present that wish to speak to us, we don't have any public hearings this morning, so anything on the agenda is fair game at this point, except I will mention I've had a request that for article, I'm sorry, item 6A, no, I'm sorry, not that one, 6, 7A, I've been asked if we would open the floor for public comment at that point, so I will. But if anyone wishes to come forward now to address that item or any other, we'd be glad to hear you. All these people and no one wants to talk to us. Wow. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is item four, the consent agenda. We have a number of items that have been pulled from that agenda this morning. C-3B has been pulled, C-8B, C-9I, and that those are the items that have been pulled. We do have some, oh, I'm sorry, in one of the, we have some additions as well. We have additions CA 1, 2, 3, and 4. Are there any items on the consent agenda that commissioners would like to have pulled for individual comment or discussion?
Madam Chair, perhaps a brief discussion of item CA 4, which is really an add-on. That is the approval of the 2003-04 Amendment to Insurance and Wage Articles with the bargaining unit. They approved, I believe, yesterday the board's offer on wages and it's identical to what I believe we offered the non-bargaining unit employees. So we're recommending approval of that.
Well, thank you very much. Are there any other items that my somewhat smaller board wishes to discuss?
If there's no discussion, I'd move approval of the consent agenda with the items that you've noted that have been pulled and added.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second to the motion on the floor?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The item, the consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to item, there are no public hearings, so we have no items under 5, 6A. Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an item that relates to the issue of access to the beaches at night. Currently, the county's code, which was adopted in 1982, regulates access to the beaches and prohibits access on those beach parks, what I would call it like a beach park, from sunset to sunrise daily. Let me, let me just say that the beach itself, Madam Chair, and other, other members of the commissioner, the, as I understand it, is owned by the state in trust for the public from the mean high water seaward. So there is no regulation of that. Anybody can go on the beach at any point in time in that particular area moving laterally. What we're talking about is the county's parks that are adjacent to the, to the beach. Those are closed, as I understand it, from sunrise to, or from sunset to sunrise. And it was been a suggestion that we open those, those beach parks up for 24-hour access. Again, anybody can walk on the beach at any point in time. The county can't restrict that legally. We don't. We're talking about the park accesses that we own along the beach. That currently is restricted. And we're recommending, based on board discussion, past board discussion, that we grant permission to advertise so we can more fully discuss the pros and cons of doing that. There are, of course, there are pros and cons to doing it, and those are probably more properly discussed at the time of the public hearing. But the reason, as I understand it, in 1982, that we did restrict access were concerns about security at the beaches, lighting, things of that nature. So those are issues that we will be bringing to the board's attention at the public hearing. And then, of course, there will be public comment as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Yes?
May I ask a question? Mr. McIntyre, who regulates the beaches within the city limits of Fort Pierce? Is that, does this ordinance affect those or is that done separately?
It, it would only affect those, those beaches inside, that the county owns. If there are county-owned parks inside the beach parks that are, as I phrase them, inside the city, they would be affected by this. This would not affect any park owned by the city of Fort Pierce. I don't know that Port St. Lucie owns any beach parks, but I think Fort Pierce does. I think Kimberly-Bregalas Park, I believe, is a city park. This would not affect those at all.
Right. Before the next public hearing, could I just ask that staff find out how many beaches are within the city limits so there's no conflict and if there are, if we can get input from the city of Fort Pierce on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I had a question to ask. It's suggested here that we may wish to consider referring the issue to the Recreation Advisory Board for comments and recommendations.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's a good idea. What does that do to our timeline as far as advertising? When do they next meet?
Madam Chair, we probably wouldn't be able to make the October 21st date because I believe the September meeting's already been held. And so we would be looking at an October meeting. And I believe, I don't know if Linda Brown is here, but I believe that they meet like the third.
It's the third Monday, we're the 20th, so we've already put that on the agenda for the RAB. We're also getting input from the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Mascarell will be sending us memorandum on his thoughts on this also.
So Madam Chair, what I would suggest is rather than identify a specific date at this point, let's refer to the Recreation Advisory Board, get their recommendation. And then after that, it would be sometime in November, I think, is when we would, we would bring this back.
That was kind of where I was wondering if we needed to go. That sounds fine to me. Do we have any further comment from board members? If not, I don't know that we really need a motion on that, or do we?
Well, just to grant advertising, Madam Chair.
May we approve?
Grant advertising. I thought we just said we're sending it to the Rec Advisory Board and then bringing it back.
Well, what we were gonna do is go ahead and advertise, but after the Recreation Advisory Board makes a recommendation. If you prefer to wait on that until the recommendations, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, it seems like the appropriate step would be to direct this to the Recreation Advisory Board and then have that recommendation come back to this full board. And at that time, we'll move forward with the permission to advertise with a specific date. We could do that, yes, sir.
If we're waiting until after, I have no problem with that. It's fine.
Are we voting for a motion already? No, I think, well, we'll just take that as direction. Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, we have 6B amended and restated interlocal agreement with the medical examiner. Mr. McIntyre, are you handling that also, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The county is currently a party to an existing interlocal agreement with Indian River County, Martin County, Okeechobee County, and St. Lucie County. Those are the four counties that comprise the 19th Judicial District. We also, as parties to the agreement, are the medical examiner and Indian River Community College, so it's quite a cooperative effort. The, the current agreement provides for funding of the medical examiner's office, including the morgue. The morgue is actually out at the college. The college is providing that building to the counties for a dollar a year. And the medical examiner obviously performs his function at, at that building. The current agreement expires on September 30th, 2003. Attached to the memorandum is a copy of a proposed amended and restated interlocal agreement in black line form. The funding formula is the same as the current agreement. It's based on the, it's a blended formula based on the number of autopsies and deaths in each county. The community college would continue to rent the building housing the morgue to the counties for a dollar a year. Staff recommends that the board approve the amended and restated interlocal agreement and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Not, we'll entertain a motion.
May we approve?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Moving right along to item 7A, a request for renewal of the bus bench agreement for three years with Metropolitan Systems. Mr. Wasney?
Madam Chair, this is, as you mentioned, a request for renewal of a bench bus agreement with Metropolitan Systems to benefit the Fort Pierce JCs, the Port St. Lucie JCs, the United Way, the Boys and Girls Clubs, and Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Staff recommends that the board consider the request to extend the bus agreement, bus bench agreement with Metropolitan Systems Incorporated for three years. As part of your, your package, your agenda package, I had code enforcement take photographs of the existing benches. They're limited to 50. The benches are in generally good condition. Also, I asked Mr. Peter Urbah with Metropolitan Systems to provide a, an indication of the amount of monies that are collected and distributed to the various organizations. And that is part of your package as well. Some citizens have expressed concerns about the benches and staff recommends that the board allow for public comment.
Thank you. With that in mind, are there any questions or comments from the board at this point? If not, I will open for public comment. Seeing none, is there any member of the public present that wishes to address this item?
Good morning. Walter Deemer from the Vice President of the River Park Homeowners Association. And I apologize for what I'm about to say because it's sort of like being against motherhood and apple pie, but the River Park Homeowners Association would like to urge that the board vote not to renew this contract. The basic reason is because we think they're just plain ugly, but there's more- The basic reason is because we think they're just plain ugly, but there's more than that. When we started doing research on Metropolitan Systems Incorporated, if you do a search on Google and put in Metropolitan Systems and then benches, you get a bunch of hits. And interestingly, the first couple pages of hits, which is as far as I went, refer to problems that various municipalities and jurisdictions in the state of Florida have had with Metropolitan Systems Incorporated. The homeowners sent the commissioner, the board members, an email citing some of these, but the three that we cited were the city of West Palm Beach, the city of Kasami, and Pasco County. The problems they had were not putting the contract up for bids via fair and open competition when it came up for renewal, an inability to inspect Metropolitan's finances with regard to how much money they take in and what percentage of that actually goes to charities, and an inability to control the number of benches Metropolitan Systems Incorporated puts up and where they are placed. It is also interesting that if you look at the contract, that the county is being asked to renew with Metropolitan Systems Incorporated. There are all sorts of regulations in the contract. Benches placed within the unincorporated area of the county as being herein provided shall be governed by and subject to the following general criteria. And nine criteria are followed, including criteria F, not more than one bench displaying a commercial message or intended for the display of commercial message shall be permitted at a particular location, and only one bench shall be permitted at any intersection. On my way here this morning, I noticed two benches at U S one and Kidderman and U S one and Midway. I am sure there are others because I came directly here. But this is all, there are nine of these things, so they should protect the county and that Metropolitan Systems Incorporated should be able to regulate this. Well, not quite, because the subsection J of the contract that you're begging asked to approve, should any bench fail to conform to the above general criteria, or should a property owner object to the presence of a bench, then the county administrator may request by written notice that Metropolitan Systems Incorporated remove such bench within thirty days. And upon Metropolitan Systems failure to do so, the county may remove same at the expense of Metropolitan Systems. I don't know about you, but I think the county administrator and the assistant county administrator and their staff have enough to do without enforcing the benches, without trying to see whether there are a certain number of feet back from the curb, whether there's a certain angle from the highway, and then writing letters and following up and removing the benches. I don't know, I hope the county administrator is not physically have to remove the benches, but I'm not sure from the contract. Also of interest, you will notice as you drive up Route one that these ugly things disappear when you get to the city of Fort Pierce city limit. The city of Fort Pierce once had a contract with Metropolitan Systems Incorporated, but chose not to renew it. And their reasoning was severalfold. They thought that the Metropolitan was using the charities as an excuse to do something they would otherwise not be permitted to do. They thought that Metropolitan, that the advertising signs on the benches circumvented their sign code and made the code, the code very difficult to enforce. And they also thought the signs were just plain ugly. And so I think the, the, the board needs to determine whether the actual and potential problems from continuing this arrangement with Metropolitan Systems Incorporated outweigh the contributions they make to the four charities involved. And I would point out that of the, there is a letter Metropolitan Systems Incorporated sent to the Director of Development on July thirty-first listing the forty-one benches they have currently located in the unincorporated area of St. Lucie County. Two of the forty-one benches have, have signs for charities. The other thirty-nine are commercial. The in-kind, I don't know, there are three charities that are supposed to get in-kind advertising signs, and one of them isn't getting them as of July thirty-first. It's the opinion of the homeowner, River Park Homeowners Association, that the end, a relatively small contribution to charities does not justify the means, the placing of advertising benches willy-nilly throughout the unincorporated areas of the county. I believe that pollution in the name of charity is still pollution. I believe that a wrong perpetrated under the guise of charity is still a wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wants to address the board on this item? Yes, sir?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Peter Erba. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm associated with Metropolitan Advertising, and as a rebuttal to what the previous gentleman said, the, the benches are of a public benefit to people who want to sit down. They are basically hurricane-proof. They've been in use for fifty years or so. It's a very subjective thing to say whether or not they're ugly. I could think of other things that could be perhaps more ugly in, in the area. The point of not enough public service benches is a moving target. We take them down, we repaint them, we change them on the specific date that the report was issued. It probably was accurate. I know that there are several benches on the street today that are Boys and Girls Club, or Big Brothers, or United Way, J C's. And next month, those same benches may be moved, gone, repainted, amended. We provide a service that most of your small businessmen would not be able to afford to advertise and therefore contribute to the economic base. I know McDonald's is very, very distressed over the fact that they've lost a number of benches and opportunities, and they consider themselves to be major employers in, in St. Lucie County. We don't overcharge a local businessman for an advertisement that he otherwise wouldn't be able to afford. It's unlike newspapers or other media that are expensive, and the boxes and places where the papers are often distributed are, are not environmentally suitable either. If with the county growing and expanding under the rate that it has in recent years, I would expect that you would require more benches. I thought that your bus system would require a place for people to sit down. I would expect that with growth, you would provide additional services like that. We are willing to do that if the bench happens to be offensive to someone in a particular neighborhood, and I don't know where that association is. You know, we'll take the benches away from their neighborhood and any other place. We've worked with the county six years ago to establish the criterion as to where these benches were going to be placed, and we're prepared to make the necessary adjustments to satisfy as many people as we can. I think that's probably the most sincere response I can make on a accusation such as the man previous to me made. Can I answer any questions for you?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Erba. I do have a question. What is the total contribution that your company gives to the local charitable organizations that you have repeatedly referenced?
It, it comes to about five thousand dollars a year or about twenty percent of gross revenues, and we don't always collect all of our, all of the indebtedness due to our, to our advertising program. In other words, we have bad debts.
Mr. McIntyre, do we have something in our contract that requires this company to verify the figures he's just stated this morning? Or have you voluntarily provided any information to us verifying that twenty percent of your gross receipts are actually going towards these charities?
Yes.
You have? So we have the documentation?
I responded to Mr. Wozni's request for a report as to generate revenues generated during the last twelve-month period.
Okay, so the verification is a handwritten letter that we received. Do I have in my hand this one?
Yes, sir. That's, I, we are not General Motors, so I wrote it myself and sent it to you. I don't have staff to do typing and things like that.
Mr. McIntyre, do we, do we require any further verification other than a handwritten letter?
There's nothing in the contract that would require anything in addition to that.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Personally, I agree with every comment that Mr. Deemer made. While I think the local charities are worthy of our support, we raised more in that one bowling event just from the county than all these different groups are, are getting combined. I've never seen anyone sit on these benches. What I see is that ugly bench sitting on every corner. And I think that if we're really going to provide a, a bench system for our new bus, our transit system, we're going to need a lot more than, than this particular bench. We're going to need covered benches, and I think those are actually in the budget at this time to provide those. I really do think this is a way to circumvent the competitive bidding process, and I, I really don't like what this does to our community in terms of, of the looks of it. I do fully support the charitable organizations that were identified. I volunteer my own time for some of those entities, but I think there's other ways in which we can raise money for them without having to put these ugly benches and advertising all over our roadways. So I would like to get a little bit more information on a number of issues, one of which is the amount of benefit these charities are actually receiving and actually verify that information with those organizations. I'd also like to know whether there is any real value to these benches in connection with our new fixed route bus system, and I would suggest that we have this item come back to us at either the next meeting or soon thereafter if we, if we get a little bit more information.
I don't have a problem at all with that. Commissioner Hutchison, do you have anything further to say?
None at all. Mr. Commissioner Coward, I agree with you on, I'd like to know where we propose putting benches for the transit system.
Right.
And how that's going to tie in with this and what regulations we're going to have on our own benches, including the two CRAs that are involved. So I'd like to have more additional information on this also.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Commissioners, the, the agreement is, is structured, it was done in nineteen ninety-eight, but the agreement was structured as, as a three-year term, and it automatically renews unless the, the board terminates it ninety days before the renewal term. So it's already been in place for about six years, not quite six years. It was January sixth of nineteen ninety-eight. Unless the board has another meeting between now and October the sixth, it's going to automatically renew. And I don't believe we do have, I think the thirtieth is, is a fifth Tuesday, so the, the agreement, unless, unless we do something, is going to automatically extend for an additional three years if, if we don't act by October the sixth.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Do we have the ability to say no to this and then go review through and then possibly re-advertise it?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We could re-advertise a, a, a new proposal if, if that were, were the case.
Okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the county commission. My name's Andrew Moose, and I am the statewide coordinator for the Florida J C's for this bus bench program. And I work with, I work with every city and county within the state of Florida on this that, that Metropolitan Systems and the J C's are partnered with, and I've been doing it for thirteen years. I can tell you that I am also currently involved working with the city of Fort Pierce, and I have worked on every one of the cities and counties that this gentleman referred to in his accusations. I can tell you that we are a fifty-three-year-old program of the Florida J C's that is the largest and most successful. In fifty-three years, it has spread throughout the nation and around the world. It's now being done by J C's in a hundred and thirty-seven other countries as well. People all over the world, I think, given the choice, would rather sit than stand while To initially address your immediate concern, the J C's would be more than happy to extend that ninety-day notice till whenever the convenience of your next county commission meeting is, or even another one past that. So if that's an issue, we'd be more than happy to take that into consideration with your staff. We'd also be more than happy to work out any of the kinks in this with your staff between now and then. We have, excuse me, we have this program statewide, and it benefits over three hundred and fifty nonprofit organizations statewide, in addition to the four that you have here. It's a terrific program. It, it helps keep, more than anything, keep the, the nonprofit organizations' membership growing. It also has helped a lot of nonprofits get donations through recognition from the benches as well. I'd be more than happy to answer any of your questions as well, or, you know, just say that we'd be more than happy to wait until your next county commission meeting for that renewal. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sure that's, that's an interesting concept, but we do have a contract. How do we go about dealing with that fact? Since we've indicated we would like to discuss it at a later date.
Madam Chair, we'd have to do some type of written amendment to the contract that would extend the, the renewal period.
Well, since we don't have a meeting between now and the sixth, how can that be handled?
The, we would have to go to Metropolitan Systems, and they could sign it, but if they, if they didn't, then we'd have to, I guess we'd have to hold a special meeting between now and the, and the seventh to, to actually take action.
They'll sign it.
Well, the J C's have indicated, gentlemen from Metropolitan, are you in agreement with that, that you would extend the contract while we determine if the information's been requested?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any comments from any other board members, or is there someone else that wishes to speak there? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I'm Pamela Hammerick. I'm a member of your local J C chapter. I had occasion last year to walk into the Cracker Barrel out on Virginia Avenue, and actually, it's Okeechobee, I'm sorry. The general manager pulled me aside and asked me why we pulled his bench, because he paid every year for that small amount of advertising out on Okeechobee Road to point to his restaurant. He told me his business had been cut in half because nobody could find Cracker Barrel. It was coming off of I ninety-five. Everybody saw Denny's, everybody saw Red Lobster, everybody saw all those restaurants that fronted the road, and they couldn't find Cracker Barrel. I've had several businesses ask me why we pulled the benches in Fort Pierce. I would, it, it would be a detriment to our businesses and our economic base to an extent if we were to pull those advertisements off of the unincorporated properties. I myself have seen my J C advertisements that have just gone up because we have just reformed the chapter in the county. It would, if you want the benches moved, we can move them wherever you want them. We can redistribute them anywhere you want them redistributed. Please don't do this to the charities that are in the county. We have a hard enough time raising funds as it is. This is a guaranteed fundraiser that we don't have to work a whole lot for to get some of those funds in, that we desperately need to help run our organizations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, on, on a date, rather than the next commission meeting, which is October the seventh, which is a, a night meeting, and there's a significant number of public hearings, I would suggest if, if Metropolitan and the J C's would agree that we have, have to bring this back on October the fourteenth, which is a, is a day meeting, and it would be, we'd have more time to spend on it and wouldn't be subsumed into the other public hearings that we're going to have on the seventh. And that would be, we could notify them by the fifteenth, and if they'd be agreeable to it.
Can I make another suggestion? We would prefer to be at a night meeting just because most of the J C's work during the day, and it's really very difficult to get here for a nine o'clock meeting. I came all the way from Tampa and drove, drove since five o'clock this morning to be here, but if we could have a night meeting, and I understand you've got a lot of public hearings, and I don't even mind being... and I don't even mind being on the next one, because I'll be in California on the 14th, but if, if it's possible to go to the next evening meeting, uh, it would be a lot fair to, fairer to the charities so we could show up and actually represent, have a better representation.
Madam Chair, the next night meeting is the October 7th meeting, and it is, does begin at 6 o'clock.
Is that agreeable to the other members of the board? I do have one comment to make. Uh, it was just referenced that one of the reasons these benches were such, such a, a good deal for everyone is that it advertises the charities. I'm looking through the list in front of me, and I only see one that says Big Brothers and one that says United Way. So if we're looking for membership to these organizations through the benches, I, I don't know where they are, but according to this list, they don't exist. Yes, ma'am?
There have been three new benches placed out on US One in Port St. Lucie within the past two weeks. I just noticed them myself. I drive US One on a daily basis, um, at the corner of St. Lucie Boulevard and US One. There is a J.C. bench there. Um, it says J.C. Life Training, Fund Training and Leadership, and it gives a contact number. Um, we have two other such benches within the county. Spoke to my chapter president just this morning. He says that they are everywhere. As Mr. Erba explained, they constantly rotate, they constantly change them so that you're not looking at the same bench all the time. Um, but I know of three that I can verify myself that say J.C. Life or a J.C. project.
Okay, well, thank you. I guess our list was incorrect or incomplete. Um, I did notice one item in the contract as well. Um, county in its discretion shall reserve the right to designate a particular residential street of, or residential zone as scenic residential areas. Um, do we have any areas that are excluded from these benches? Do we know?
Madam Chair, we did, I, I don't know. We can find the answer to that and get back to the board.
Thank you. That would be one of the items of information I think we should have.
Madam Chairman, going along that same vein, that's been some of my concern reading through this contract, is that it's almost, we don't really have a say as to where these go, and that was part of my reason for asking if we can, with the ability to cancel this one and then go back and revisit the entire RFP process, if that's what it has to be, to tighten it up, where we have the ability to place them, what they're going to look like, how they're going to be affected, affecting neighborhoods and so forth, and possibly even require a certain percentage of them have to advertise the charities.
I agree. I like the RFP concept. The, uh, local charities that have been identified might end up reaping greater rewards if we put it out for bid. Um, you know, these organizations are getting less than $2,000 apiece. I suspect there's an opportunity, if we were to actually continue such a program, that they might do even better. So, uh, I'm absolutely interested in getting some more information and, and potentially putting this out to bid if we choose to move forward with this.
Well, I think that determination will probably be made at the meet at the public hearing when it returns to us then.
Then, may I ask then, then, instead of the night of the, what is it, October 7th is the first night meeting? If we do it the third one, would that be agreeable? That meeting, I understand, could be another midnight meeting. Six, Mr. McIntyre referenced the 6th of October. That's an early meeting. I'm asking for the next night meeting.
The 7th is, is the night meeting, Madam Chair.
Sorry, the 7th.
The, the next night meeting after that would be October 21st.
Would you be agreeable to that night?
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm.
Well, I don't have a problem with that then. We've asked for a lot of information. If we could have that brought back to us at that time, we could determine what direction we're going to move in with this.
Thank you. I'd also like to say that every single location of a bench that's out there was provided to us by the county. We did not randomly select them. The county told us exactly where to put every single one of them.
Madam Chair, uh, what Mr. Moose said is, is correct. We, in, I think it was 1998 when this agreement was formed, I think there were 75 benches in the county. Uh, we reduced that number to a maximum of 50, and, uh, between that point in time and now, I think there've been, there's been requests for additional benches or replacement benches. Uh, in one occasion, I think we denied the request, uh, because of other benches being in the area, and then we did approve another bench, but, um, there's a limit of 50 in the county, and that was a result of, uh, our action, and we did, uh, the county did approve those 50 locations.
Madam Chair, I don't want to belabor this much longer, but there was mention made about the public benefit that these benches provide for people that are walking, uh, so that they can sit down. Um, what I see them actually is an obstacle for people using the sidewalk, because the benches are put on these, so people walking or, or biking or rollerblading are actually running into these obstacles. So I think we really do need to take a much closer look at this, and, uh, I'd like to know if they are in fact being used. What I'm hearing about, of course, is the advertising benefits and the trickle that makes it down to the charities, but, uh, I really would like to, to get some sense of whether these benches are actually being used in the community.
Well, we can get our information together and revisit this issue then in the month of October. Thank you. We'll move on to item 7B, the bi-weekly committee reports. Commissioner Hutchinson, you want to start us off, please?
Well, I'm going to be real fast. I was, the only one I'm reporting on today is the Treasure Coast Regional Planning, and I was unable to attend. I was attending the Citizens Budget Meeting that morning, so.
Thank you.
You missed a good meeting.
That's what I heard.
We had a special tour, uh, of Port St. Lucie. Mayor Minsky had requested that the Regional Planning Council participate in the tour, and it was quite impressive, and it helped remind me of the partnerships that the county and the city have had. I think of late, we've been focusing on some of the, um, western edge areas that we've had some differences of opinion on, but we were able to go through the Village Green CRA, the Riverwalk area, areas that the county have actually financially contributed and partnered with the city to help make it happen, and we're starting to see some of those, uh, benefits, uh, with various projects and so forth. So I thought it was an excellent, uh, tour, and, uh, it's unfortunate that we weren't able to, uh, have every elected official attend. Only those, of course, on the RPC were able to make it. The other committee is the, uh, St. Lucie County Fire District, and our last meeting was a finalization of both the budget and the military.
Thank you. Uh, on my list here, the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, uh, they're still reorganizing as far as the ex-fishio, so I have not been attending that. Children's Services Council, we too have finalized our budget for the year. Um, moving on with that, the Cultural Affairs Council was pretty much a housekeeping meeting, and the Transportation, uh, Coordinating Board did meet. Um, that board's kind of interesting. We've got some new members with some, some new concerns and some new ideas, so those meetings are contrary to the way things have been a lot of times, where it's basically just a little bit of housekeeping in business. Meetings have been fairly lively. There have been some good discussions, and that's all I have to report. Uh, anything else from other board members? Any comments or questions? Staff? If not, do we have motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
We'll come to orders the St. Lucie County Mosquito Control District. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of September 9th and the tentative budget hearing on September 11th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to general public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the mosquito board? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And see our motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.